Hi.
Hello, how are you?
I think I kicked us, Melissa, off, I think.
Yeah, we all had to slog back in.
Sorry, sorry about that. I have a couple of different internet connections over here.
Oh, really?
Hopefully. Yeah, I'm down at the beach today.
Oh, love it, love it. Perfect day.
Hello, ladies.
Hi.
How are you guys?
Good, warm.
Are you guys still getting dressed up for these things?
Well, you know.
Lego short with his tie and everything, you know that's coming.
Yeah, well, the jacket's always in the closet behind him. Can't not wear it. It's funny. How's the construction going?
Almost over.
Good.
Almost over, I'm just waiting to get my, the electrician will be done Saturday, the plumber will be done Saturday, and then they'll, then that's it, really. For the siding outdoors. Get some cabinets, gotta finish some cabinets, and then I'm waiting, I'm waiting on my appliances to show up. Yeah, and then, I don't know, then the baby will be here right after that.
Oh, my God.
The baby might be to finish, I don't know.
But it's super exciting.
Yeah, so.
God, you went from no grandparents to like you're overflowing now.
My parents are like, you know, they're in the same boat, their first great grandkids now, you know, Chris's first, Dominique's baby, and one of my nieces is having a baby in October, November.
Wow. Exciting stuff, exciting stuff.
Chris and his wife are taking that kid on their first, their first out-of-state visit. I said, "You can't just go to Maine and visit, you gotta stay for two weeks."
Yeah, yeah, right, gotta quarantine when you come home, oh, crazy.
I'm guessing that the, you know, they won't be quarantining, he's just going up to play golf, and we're playing in a golf on Monday, so he's going up early.
Same shirt and tie I've been wearing for weeks, because everyone knows it now.
I'm beginning to think it's one of those, like those big t-shirts, you just pull over, you know?
I wish it was, because for some reason it's giving me trouble, I don't know.
Armin, you're scaring me, you're early.
Oh, I gotta go back and I'll chime in again later.
No. Okay.
Right, you having trouble with your shirt, Greg?
Yeah, it feels, it feels super tight. Just go on, I'll just need a moment.
Why don't you just take your tie off?
I might, I might. I don't know why I talk, I have more time.
Hey, on the, I'm not, I'm not, I'm gonna take a page out of my friend David's book, and be a stickler for details, but in this charge of the Green Mountain School Committee,
Yeah.
it continually references the Select Board, which we are not yet legally.
That's a good point.
I'm not, I don't, you know, obviously, I don't have any objections to the name, but until the name has been, you know, voted on and approved by, you know, by the appropriate vote, you can't have it, we can't change everything.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna, I don't know if we should change it, or I'll just read it the different way, or what, but, what does it need to be read?
It doesn't need to be read, but you can say "as revised," and then if you give me about two minutes, I can change everything to Board of Selectmen. But, yeah, you can just say "as revised."
Yeah, all right, now just point out why.
Yep.
But, so we're all here. It's six o'clock, and I guess we can start reading. As we have been doing, I will read the script for remotely conducted open meetings. And as a preliminary matter, my name is Christopher De Silva, I am the chairman of the Maine and Board of Selectmen. And permit me to confirm that all members of the, members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So, members of the board, as I call your names, respond in the affirmative if you're here. David?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
Armin Di Macarian?
Yes.
And Melissa?
Yes.
All right, and then for staff, we have Greg Johnson?
Yes.
Stephanie Duggan?
Yep.
And Megan Zmudo. And then, so, good morning, good afternoon, everybody. This open meeting of the Maine and Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public meetings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation. Unless such participation is required by law, this meeting may or may not feature public comment. For this meeting, the board is convening by Zoom and telephone, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and that take care not to take, take care not to screen share your computer, because anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the documents for this evening's meeting are on Board Docs. And all the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on Board Docs. And we recommend the members in the public follow the agendas posted on Board Docs, unless the chair or someone else notes otherwise. We will now turn to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda, and after they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of the members inviting each by name to provide any further comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called further. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please, if you wish to speak, please wait until the floor is yielded to you, and always state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in conversation with other members, please do so through the, through the chair, taking care to identify yourselves. And if there are any items with public comments, after the members have spoken, we will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once we have a list of all public commentators, we will call each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, in this meeting, as all public, open meetings, the, each vote taken will be conducted by a rule called "vote." And as the rules, and the meeting is open, there is no political allegiance this evening. Is there any public comments this evening?
Everybody not there?
No.
You're not paying attention.
I am.
Okay, no public comment. The first item on our agenda after public comments is item number two. And this evening, there are three correspondence items. And I motion that we move to accept and approve the correspondence items as shown. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And then, so the three, the three items are the letters of recognition as a result of the town meeting, and unless anybody has any questions on those, does anyone have any questions on those on the board? Okay, we shall vote to accept. David?
Yes.
Armin?
You're muted.
Armin, you did?
I'm yes now.
Okay, Melissa?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am yes as well, so that passes. Thank you. The, the next item of business is the school building committee. And we have the charge and the nominations to the committee. The only, the only difference, I'll read the motion, is to approve the charge of the school building committee as adjusted.
As revised.
As what?
Revised.
As revised, yeah. Motion to approve the charge of the school building committee as revised. And just so, for the record, the revision, for anybody that's interested in the revision, is
Let's see, you have that board.
That the, the charge uses the language "Select Board," but until that all has been verified and everything and voted on, and, you know, that's all put behind us and approved, we are still legally the Maine and Board of Selectmen. So Greg will adjust the charge, and I'll read it as it will be adjusted. And the charge, as approved on June 25th, 2020, the school building committee is charged by the Maine and Board of Selectmen to be responsible for all aspects of the building project to address the community needs served by the Green Meadow Elementary School Building. The committee shall follow the statutes and regulations specified by the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The committee shall support the Board of Selectmen and School Committee in securing an appropriation for the project. The committee's responsibilities include development, production, and presentation of a feasibility study to explore the construction, renovation, or alternative methods to address the community's needs served by the Green Meadow Elementary School Building. The committee shall undertake the schematic design process for a new school building, based on the findings of the feasibility study. The committee shall anticipate serving as the construction oversight body as well. The committee will make recommendations to the town on all financial, contractual, and schedule matters. And finally, the school building committee shall be the point of contact for all community groups for all issues regarding the project. The community shall ensure community engagement throughout the planning and execution of the final design and construction. It is the expectation that will be multiple opportunities throughout the process to solicit community feedback. And that is the charge of the school building committee for the Green Meadow Elementary School Building. And then along with it, there are several motions. There's actually one motion, but it's, the motion is to appoint members to the school building committee with terms beginning July 1st, 2020, and expiring upon completion of the committee's charge. And the nominees are Jerry Colbert, a community representative, Mark Anderson, as a community representative, Anthony Mighty, as a community representative, Matthew Johann, as a community representative, Nicholas Kane, as a community representative, Wayne White, the school business manager, Justin Di Marco, the DPW director, Robert Rulo, as the principal of Green Meadow Elementary School, and finally, Jennifer Goddette, the assistant superintendent. And also, it does state that members of the Select Board, School Committee, and Finance Committee may serve as liaisons. And also, other town and school department staff may serve as advisors. And that's, that is the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I don't know, do we, does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Michelle Jenkins, Town Clerk.
Yes, Town Clerk.
Hi. I would need all that information in my office, like the charge, because I plan on starting everything, so everyone knows what the charge of every board, committee, commission does, if that's okay with you.
I think that's more than appropriate.
Okay, so I would like that on file in my office, and then I also would need what the vote is tonight.
Okay, we'll make sure that happens between Greg and I.
I'm taking notes, Michelle.
And, and then, when you appoint people, I need their names, addresses of everyone.
And do they also have to be sworn in?
Yes, they do. And we're, we're going through a thing right now, unfortunately, I cannot swear people in remotely. It's a state law. So everyone has to come out and set up an appointment with us, so. Okay.
We'll make sure that happens.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody on the board have any questions?
I just have one question about the charge. Is it similar to the charge for the high school? David could probably speak to that. You're muted, though.
To be hon, to be honest, I do not recall what the charge specifically was for the high school, but my guess is it's state, it's state format.
Okay.
So I, I wasn't given this format, I, I looked it up at what other towns and other school building committees, and that's, and that's what I came up with, so, which is standard language, I mean, I've seen this, this, to this degree, and other, so, yes, I, but I did not look up with, admittedly, I did not see what the high school's charge was.
Okay.
All right.
But essentially, that was it, what I was just reading.
Well, but there's not much else, right? Um, all right, I mean, there are a few people whose names are on the list, I don't know if anybody has any questions for anybody that's on the list, but, I mean, I don't, I'm thankful, especially with all that's going on in the world, that there are this number of people willing to sit on a committee that they know is gonna take a while, and there's no, is gonna be, you know, likely to meet some opposition and everything in the community, but, so thank you to everybody who's on the call, whose name is on this list, and has volunteered to serve on this committee. We truly appreciate your volunteering for it.
I wanted to say there's some impressive resumes as well, so we have some, we have some good to come on.
Absolutely, absolutely a good group, as we always get.
And I think one or two people served on the high school committee.
Jerry Colbert and Anthony Medei were both on the high school.
And I'm sorry if I butchered anybody's pronunciation of their last name. Usually, usually we get to see these folks in the, in the selectmen's chambers before we start, and we can say, "How do you pronounce your name so it's right?" But I do apologize if anyone's name was mispronounced. That all being said, if anyone doesn't have any questions, we'll vote. Does anybody on the board have any questions? All right, let's vote. David?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
I am yes as well, so those guys, again, thank you all. For everyone that's on the call, Greg, Megan, or Megan will reach out and try and set up the, the appointments with Michelle Jenkins to be sworn in once that's ready to go. And Michelle, we will get you everything you'll need to meet your needs, too. Now, on to the economic development issues for tonight, which is the reason we more or less called the meeting. I guess nothing's changed, Megan, everything's kind of still the same as last week, all the rules and the things we've set up, so we're just, you know, the regulations are gonna, these are gonna follow along with what we saw before, correct?
Yes, yep, everything's the same, we just have four new applications for your consideration this evening.
Okay, so I will start with the first one, and I'll read the action, recommended action. And it is a motion to approve the application for temporary extension of premises outdoor dining area on private property slash parking lot slash municipal right of way, submitted by Azukar. Which approval is subject to compliance with the terms and condition of the board's policy and subject to compliance with the plans submitted, which plans are incorporated into this decision, and further subject to the following conditions. One, that all outdoor dining service shall cease at nine o'clock PM. Two, that all areas without outdoor dining service shall be clear from people at 10:00 PM. Three, that appropriate inspections are completed. Four, furniture and any restaurant materials are removed from the area after the restaurant closes each evening of operation. And five, that appropriate detour signage and equipment will be established in concert with the DPW. And also, that the board does authorize the use of our digital signatures if this is approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
That was, that was, Armin.
Armin. I'm sorry. I sound like David sometimes.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, does anybody have any questions or concern about this particular permit?
So it's obviously gonna be in the parking, parking spaces, right, if not on the sidewalk?
So this one, this is Megan Zmudo, Assistant Town Administrator. This is kind of a hybrid approach, we had the whole review team, I think just about 90% of the review team out to Azukar last week, I believe, and to assess, you know, this specific challenging geography of how to, how to make an extension of premises program work. And the solution that we came up with was to allow for some space in front of the restaurant, but keeping in mind, you know, a three-foot buffer around the fire hydrant. And then also, closing the entryway into Naylor Court. The restaurant tables would take up half of the space, and then the other half of the lane would be kept open for emergency vehicles only. This was, you know, a comfortable compromise with public safety, they felt that they needed to have an access point. But they, they also felt like if they had half of that lane, you know, it would be an appropriate amount of space for a vehicle to go through. The other thing that's unique about this application is that when the business is not in operation, all equipment must be removed from the street, from like the entry to Naylor Court. So it will only be out during the hours of the restaurant. So if you're driving around Maynard, you know, 10 o'clock on a Sunday, Saturday morning, midday, they're really only open for evenings except for on Sunday. So that is the plan for this one, so it's a little different than the other applications that you've reviewed so far.
So, and so Megan, are you gonna have some kind of buffer between the, you know, the emergency lane and where the tables are gonna be in that, you know, that alleyway?
Yep, the, um, yes, there will be, there will be a buffer there. That, that lane really won't be used for travel, only, it would only be open in an emergency situation. But, but, but yes, we will have buffers that we've been using, which are kind of the Jersey barriers. And we actually just applied for a grant today for more traffic calming and equipment to support this program and some of the other, you know, complete streets and traffic calming programs, so hopefully we'll get some additional funding and be able to, you know, update our inventory of this equipment that can be used for this and for other programs in town.
Megan, can we, can we use the COVID money for this type of stuff, so CARES Act and that type of thing?
Yes, I believe so, I think, I think Justin did apply, did purchase additional Jersey barriers with some of that funding. I'd have to double check and get back to you, but I believe some of it can be used, yeah.
Yeah, he told, he told me that indeed he did, that he used the, some of the stuff that we used at town meetings, some of the stuff that was being, Greg and, Greg and, and Justin were down at the PC when they were building that, and they explained to me that a lot of this is reimbursable. Not only is it reimbursable, but usable for us in the future for other benefits to us. One comment before we move on, and this is applicable to all of these that we're going to be approving this evening. There is a concern from the non-restaurant businesses, especially along Main Street, that when people come in to eat, that they are parking in front of their, you know, for the liquor store, for the florist, you know, think, think down the street, as you think about the businesses that are non-restaurant, and for the ones that aren't participating in this particular program, there's a, there's a pizza place that essentially is takeout. If the participating businesses could be kind enough to somehow advertise that they encourage their, their, you know, restaurant visitors, whatever you call them, customers, to park in the municipal lots, leaving those spaces open for those that need them, it would be very helpful. And what bothers me a little bit about this one with Azukar is not what we're doing, but the fact that people will be blocked from going to the municipal lot. And one of the things that, and I realize it's only during their open hour, so it may not be a problem, but one of the things that was mentioned to me by a business owner is that people drive along, because so many people are out eating, the spaces are taken up, and nobody continues on to the empty spots that are down towards McDonald's and McDonald's buildings, they just continue on and will go to another liquor store, or to another florist, that they can just pull right in and not have to worry about it. They don't park down the street once they're past the business to walk back typically, that was, that was the, the story that I heard, so if we could encourage those businesses, because it's all a team effort, this is being done by the alliance, it's not being done just by individual businesses, so if we can encourage that, that'd be great.
David, those are all really great points, this is Megan, Assistant Town Administrator here. And those are all things that we've been talking about in our Parking Authority meetings and Economic Development Committee. Some ways that we hope to address those concerns, because I have heard them myself, are, I did include in the newsletter this week, a call to ask, you know, longer-term customers to park in the municipal lots, and for businesses to encourage that. To assist with that request, our office is creating a map that will highlight the different parking options in town. And we hope to share that very widely, and give it to businesses in, in town, so that they can put it on their website and kind of highlight different areas and different available parking areas that could be close to them, like the River Street Lot or others.
Yeah, the River Street Lot, Megan, if I may, the River Street Lot is an important one to emphasize, because I posted on social media this issue about making sure that you can park in the municipal lots, and I actually got a response from somebody, I don't know if it was public response or if it was a private response, that asked about, they said, "There's a sign up at River Street that makes it look like it's only, it's only by permit." And I realized that sign is there, that's meant for the wintertime when people purchase those, those passes, but I don't know if the wording on that can be changed, or if we can do something, but people have the impression that that's a private or a limited accessibility parking lot for people who have a permit. And we need to do a better job at advertising that it's even there.
Agreed, that, I think that's a really good point. And for the grant that I just applied to, which is the Shared Streets Grant from the state, I did also include signage and lighting for the River Street Lot, because that is in phase one of the Parking Management Plan, which is what the Parking Authority's working on. But I agree, there, there's probably some shorter-term signage pieces that we can, we can take care of right away. And I guess, just the final thing I wanted to mention on parking, is that I will be coming back as Chair of the Parking Authority with my colleagues on that group on July 7th. You know, if, if there's space on the agenda, I hope, to discuss some of the work that the Parking Authority is doing, and the recommendation for some shorter-term parking spaces that are spread out throughout the downtown, so that we can have designated spaces for people to be able to come and do some pickup. So we, we do have, you know, a plan that we're hoping to roll out, but this is all really important feedback, and we'll continue to kind of push the education piece, so that people can be aware of places they can park while we are removing some of the parking inventory. We also will come back with a map that highlights the approved parking spaces that, that was requested at the last meeting, we'll have that on the 7th as well.
So, the, the widely distributed map that we're gonna make about parking, that we're gonna give to people about the, you know, where we might park during this time, while we're allowing these, these things to take place? If somebody, if somebody is a visitor to Maynard, and they, they typically come off of 117 at Main Street, or, you know, however else they might get onto Main Street to go visit a restaurant, do we have, have you guys considered, are you guys planning on putting any, any signs that would designate where public parking is available, like a detour sign that would tell people, you know, "Take a right on River Street, there's public parking there," or explain to people that there is another entryway to this parking lot, that you cannot go in because Azukar is open, and they have, they have the sidewalk, you know, go back around and just like two signs around the loop, so they can get in by the theater? And then to get out, you know, how to get back out to our streets, because the, the egress Because the, the egress from the downtown parking lot and, you know, the, the basin, if you don't go out the, you know, either via the movie theater exit or the exit that Azukar is gonna occupy during these hours, you know, going up the, going up the bank, going up the hill by the bank, which is now squeezed a little bit by our ramp, and then, you know, any other way out of there is, um, I'm gonna suggest that it's a little bit harrowing for a, um, you know, maybe a senior driver, maybe a, maybe a young kid who just got their license or something like that. I think we need to, I think we need to direct people how to get in and out of there safely because it's not the easiest parking area in the world, once that, once that one, you know, twenty-five-foot wide of, um, entry and egress is blocked.
Right. Yeah, and I, and, um, Justin did recommend detour signage. I don't know if he's communicated with the applicant. Um, I know he's out this week, but, um, there, there was a plan discussed for detour signage to let people know how to get in, but you, you make a lot of great points. So I think, um, we'll need to solidify the signage plan prior to their opening.
People don't know, if people don't know where to go to park, they're not gonna eat at the restaurants we're trying to help.
Right, right.
The point, but anyway.
I just have, sorry.
Go ahead, Justin.
I, I think it's a great idea that they're using that entrance in Naylor Court. I just am wondering, and I think that, um, maybe Chief Noble was involved in this or, or not. I, I'm very concerned about making sure that people don't just take the turn and not realize that it's closed. So is it gonna come out far enough that, that it's gonna be very clear that that's closed before?
Yes, I think I understand what you're making, the, the point you're making. So like have, have signage, which I, I, you know, to Chris's point, have it, have it far enough in advance to direct people appropriately to say, "You can't turn left coming up now during these hours." Um, and then, you know, but access, you know, or continue to Summer Street and then enter on Summer Street across from Prudence Theater. So some, or whatever variation that could be, but that's a good point.
Right, and signage is good, but it's, but also there are so many people who don't read signs. I'm just, it's more of the act of driving, you know, if someone's used to coming down Main Street and turning left into the parking lot, they're not even gonna pay attention to the fact that, wait a minute, this has changed. I mean, things are changing, so I think people are paying a little bit more attention. But I just wanna make sure, like, I don't know how far out that barricade or barrier is gonna come. Is that gonna come out to like parking space width of like in front of Main Street? So it'll kind of give them a little bit of a space?
Yeah, I think these one, these are really good points and, um, you know, I apologize, Justin did go over this with the applicant, but I don't, I don't have the exact idea of where that signage will be. But I can, um, you know, circle back and however, however this board wants. If, if you'd prefer to, you know, wait until you see kind of what the specific plan is regarding DPW equipment, you know, we can do that, how, you know, however you'd like to proceed.
I mean, I, I pretty much, and, and obviously the rest of the board can weigh in as well, um, you know, I don't mi- I don't wanna hold up their, I don't wanna hold up their permit for this, but I just wanna make sure that that stuff has been thought of and there's a, there's a plan. I just don't, I'm not sure what it is.
Yeah.
Also, so.
I think, I think probably, um, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Mike.
We, uh, we discussed it, myself, the Fire Chief and, uh, the DPW Director. The barricades will be out in the street where normally, you know, you, uh, where a parking spot would be, but not because it's an entrance there. They will be out there. Where they start the tables is, if I had to guess, ten to twelve feet behind that par. It, it is also on the side that they were supposed to be driving on, which is also, uh, when you're doing traffic duty, that's a key element because if, if they were to pull in and everybody was on the other side, it's harder for them to do, but it's the first thing they should see if they're driving, you know, competently. So it's there. But it is to be out in the street. That's, that's what was discussed where the barricade is to be. Because this, it's not gonna get in the way of anything anyways, because it can't park there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, does anybody else have any other questions about this issue? Particular application? Okay, then, um, to vote on the Azukar application, David?
Muted. Muted.
Sorry, yes.
Okay, Armand?
Yes.
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And yes as well. All right.
I'm a yes to you, but thanks. I thought, I thought it was me.
You guys are just doubling up. All right, um, the next one is a motion to approve the application for temporary extension of premises, outdoor dining area on private property, municipal right of way, submitted by Babicos, with, with which approval is subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the board's policy and subject to compliance with the plans submitted, which are incorporated into this decision and further subject to the following conditions. Outdoor dining service shall cease at nine o'clock PM. All areas with outdoor dining service shall be clear from people at ten o'clock PM. Appropriate permits are inspected and completed. Confirmation that diners will be six feet apart and also that the board authorizes the use of our digital signature. This is approved. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or concerns regarding the Babicos application?
Megan? The one question I have, obviously we're, we're taking away, or we're, we're temporarily taking away that handicap spot. But I'm just wondering, are they gonna push one further down or is it just because there's one on, is there one on the, closer to the tree?
No, they're gonna, they're gonna relocate it. They're gonna relocate it two spots over.
Yeah.
It's the perfect little location, so that's why I was double checking.
How many, how many, how many parking spaces is this eating up, Megan? Do you know?
So it's one handicap space and the hash, like the white hash mark line that kind of goes with the handicap space, um, next to it, so directly in front of their store. So then they're gonna move those two over and they'll be in front of the laundromat, um, for temporarily. And then at the end of this program, they'll move them back.
So it's only one, they're only losing one parking space in the basin?
No, it's more like.
No, there's about two or three in front of you.
Yeah, it's, it's more like two.
Yeah.
Handicap and a half. So like it's, it's, I mean, no, it's not, it's more like two, two regular spaces are, are gone, but the handicap space will still be there, just shifted over. And then the additional, the, the additional space next to the handicap space will be shifted as well. So, I don't, I, let's go with two. Two spaces will be lost. Um, yeah.
Okay.
Or repurposed. I mean, the handicap space would be for one vehicle, which will be moved over to two spaces. So, yeah.
Is, just curious, is the accessibility from the handicap spot, um, to get up onto the curving in front of the location still appropriate? Or would a handicapped individual need to go through where these tables are in order to access a ramp in order to get up onto the sidewalk?
Uh, that is a good question, David. You know, we have, um, Bobby on the line here, who looks at it every day. So while I pull up a map, um, could you guys speak to that? Is there a ramp for the new, for the people who would be parking in the new handicap spot?
Uh, it's a small sidewalk. It's probably like maybe a couple of inches. It's not even, uh, because on the other side of my front door, it's a street level. The sidewalk, the street and my front door, it's a street level. On the other side, when we move it down in the front of the laundromat, there will be approximately two to three just high from the sidewalk. It doesn't have a ramp there, but it's not a high.
Well, for somebody in a walker or in a wheelchair, that's a problem.
Yeah, well.
We should look at that, because we should not be taking away accessibility to anybody.
It's one down the, uh, two parking spaces by my dumpster. It's, it's a flat. It's.
There's a ramp there.
It's a handicap. It's a flat. The sidewalk opens.
That's in front of the laundromat, isn't there?
Uh, no, a little fa- on the side of the laundromat.
Okay. Just make sure that, you know, I have no problem with, with helping out. I just wanna make sure that we're not limiting accessibility to handicapped individuals.
We can move the handicap close to that low part next to the dumpster.
All right, there should be no lip, there should be no lip for a handicapped individual. There should be no even, no two inches, no anything. Imagine yourself walking with a cane or, you know, or with a wheelchair or with a walker. Um, that's why we have handicap spaces with ramps available nearby. So, uh, we just have to be aware of that. And I, as long as we have worked that through, everything's fine. But please, please, please do not leave a spot for a handicapped individual that leaves them where they have to walk around further than they normally would to gain accessibility.
I can take a picture from the low part on the side of the laundromat, so you guys can see how handy that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll trust that, um, you know, Megan understands what my concern is and Greg understands what my concern is. So I'll trust that it will be worked out properly. But again, when we're, when we're configuring these things, I would just wanna make sure that we're thinking about all of our people, including those, those handicapped individuals.
Okay. Um, does anybody else have a, any questions or concerns about this particular applicant, application? All right, um, all those in favor, David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am yes as well. So that's, good luck. Bobby?
Yes, congratulations.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, the next, the next, moving right along, the next application is a motion to approve the application for a temporary extension of premises, outdoor dining area on private property slash parking lot slash municipal right of way. Submitted Amory's Tomb Brewing Company, which approval is subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the board's policy and subject to compliance with the plans submitted, which plans are incorporated into this decision and further subject to the following conditions. One, outdoor dining service, service shall cease by nine o'clock PM. Number two, all areas of outdoor dining service shall be clear of people by ten PM. Number three, appropriate inspections have been completed. Number four, approval is granted from the Board of Health to open Phase Two. And also that the board authorizes the use of our digital signatures if this article is, item is approved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, conversation, concerns or questions about Amory's Tunes application? Which is actually not on town property, but is on their property, correct?
Correct, yeah, it's there behind a building.
And isn't it the, isn't it the, basically what the Beer Garden was? Wasn't it what we approved last year as well?
Yeah.
Yes, yep. It's the same thing as last year. Um, the only difference is last year they went through it by asking for individual, um, one-day liquor licenses.
That's right.
And this year, um, due to, you know, COVID nineteen and some of the adjustments, um, there's this opportunity to expand the footprint of your liquor license, um, temporarily. So that's the approach that they're taking this year, but it, it is the same, um, the same concept.
Okay. Hello?
Yep.
Why am I?
We're still here.
We're all here, Chris.
My camera's not working. It's not showing me any picture, but okay.
Oh, no, we're here.
I don't know, well, it'll be all right. Um, so, does anybody else have any concerns? Is, are there any concerns about this application from Amory's other than that last question? All right, let's. Favor, David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Melissa?
Muted.
Melissa?
Yep.
Justine?
Yes.
Right as well. So that's, that's good. And finally, for this evening's Downtown Business Support permits and applications, we have a motion to approve the application for temporary extension of premises, outdoor dining area on private property slash parking lot slash municipal right of way, submitted by the Maynard Lodge of Elks, number fifteen sixty-eight, which approval is subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the board's policy and subject to compliance with the plans submitted, which plans are incorporated into this decision and further subject to the following conditions. One, that outdoor dining service shall cease at nine o'clock PM. Two, that all areas of outdoor dining service shall be clear from people at ten o'clock PM. Three, that all appropriate inspections are completed and also that the board does approve of their use of our digital signatures if this item is approved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, again, this one's on private property, so this minimizes some of the concerns, but does anybody have any questions or concerns about the Elks permit application?
Thank you.
All right, with no questions or concerns about this one, I guess we'll vote. David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am yes as well. Okay, um, the Chairman's report, we go right into that.
Chris, before we, before we move on, can I make one comment on that whole issue that we just finished up with the economic development thing? I was driving over on sixty-two, um, and I noticed that over at Village Pizza, they have a bunch of tables outside.
They just took, they just took, they took them in.
Okay, so I didn't think that they had gotten permission from the town, so I, and, and I don't know if they needed it.
They went rogue.
I can speak to that one. Um, this is Megan, Assistant Town Administrator. So I did work with Maynard Village Pizza on that. Um, and that application was unique because, um, they really did not, um, need to come to this board for approval. It's private land, um, they, you know, had been speaking with the health agent and food agent and there was no need to, uh, their common visitor license did cover the whole site. Um, and they had a history, um, I believe, of putting tables out in the past and that, you know, we, we did vet it internally, but, um, you know, this one we thought could be done administratively since it didn't, um, kind of hit some of the marks that the board has been approving to date.
Yeah, so I didn't see a problem with it, but just so you know, they, they took them in. They're not there today.
Okay, any else? Um, yeah, so we'll move, we'll do the reports prior to going into an executive session. As far as my report's concerned, just wanted to congratulate Mr. Gavin and Mr. Swanberg on their reelection and election to the Maynard Board of Selectmen, soon to be Select Board, and look forward to working with both of you gentlemen, as well as the remaining two members, Justine and Armand, moving forward. So congratulations. And other than that, um, I have nothing. For board member reports, Justine?
I have nothing.
Come on.
I know you're shocked.
Melissa?
I don't have anything either.
David?
Yeah, well, I wanted to, um, since this is her last official meeting publicly here, um, I wanted to thank Melissa again for her contributions, and I know we did it at another meeting, but, uh, since this was an unexpected additional meeting, so thank you, Melissa. And then last, lastly, as Michelle and her team, I did not step into the Fowler School the other day, but I heard from a lot of people who did, and, um, the feedback I got from a lot of people who voted, and I understand that the turnout was, uh, although it wasn't great in a grand scheme, it was higher than what we had anticipated, I think, for walk-in voters. From what I understand, I asked today when I was over there, that there were seven hundred walk-in voters, um, approximately. And, uh, I have not heard a negative thing about, uh, the voting. And then you combine that with town meeting and, you know, people's, um, the important part of it is that people's experience with the town is fairly limited for individuals. And, you know, they, they're reflecting, the, the reflection that they have on the town is what they see when they actually interact with it. And when you have people who are voting and they see something that's as coordinated as apparently it was at the Fowler School and the town meeting that was, that was clearly coordinated and well-done, people get a much better impression of our community. So congratulations. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you for the whole team and, um, you know, I'm sure that will continue into the future.
Yeah.
I hope, I hope you didn't drink this by saying it's Melissa's last meeting. We did that last week and here we are. But always, it's, it's, it's never enough. But always, it's, it's, it's never enough thanks, Melissa, that's for sure. Armand?
Yeah, I do have to concur with what David said. I experienced the actual in-person voting and everything is well organized. And I have to commend also Michelle and her team for doing a great job. And I second the congratulations to David and, and Jeff. And at the same time, thank you, Melissa, for all you've done. And as I said in the past, you'll be missed and we hope to see you around town and serving in maybe other committees.
Yeah, I went through it myself. I voted in person at the Fowler School and I thought it was excellent, so.
Me too.
I never went out the side door before though, but it was.
Yeah, that's why I had to go through the bathroom. No, I'm only kidding.
I found my way back to the car.
Yeah.
Anyway, so that concludes our public meeting. We are now going to make a motion to move into executive session from which we will not reconvene in open session. And that we can do by a rule called vote. So I will, I will poll the members. David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Justine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Megan, how, how do we handle this move to executive session?
There we go.
Break our room.
All right.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
You don't have to do that, because.
All right.
Did you get a message? It's like, hey, where are you?
No.
Hi, Bobby. What about Ali tomorrow?
I know. What time?
Uh, right now.
I work here at the phone line.
Did you get a message? It's like, hey, where are you?
No.
Hi, Bobby. What about Ali tomorrow?
I know. What time?
Uh, right now.
Can't hear anybody. I use. I see.
Did you get messages like, hey, where are you?
No.
Hi, Molly. What over on tomorrow?
I know. What time?
You know, he stole all the evidence. Yeah, which one we want that for? Uh, no, I just was looking to see if you could find if, uh, you know. But, you know, everybody lies to him, you know, like, he finds everybody a liar.
Hi, kitties. Mike. Mike. Chief Noble.
So they they can't be on, they can't be on.
Hey.
What's up?
Um, so I and I got into the BOS meeting late because I missed it. But Mike Noble's still on and it's recording.
I know there's nobody.
I don't know what happened, but he's talking and he's talking about people and he's saying stuff. No, you can hear everything that he's saying. And I've been trying to talk. I've been. Do you have his? Do you have his number or anything? Okay, cuz I'm I'm like going Chief Noble, Chief Noble, turn it off. Okay.
I'm gonna video. Yeah.
Okay, is that?
Are you muted? Actually. That who we were. Fire. Okay. Guys. I hope. I'm here. Absolutely outside. I don't know if I should put it out. Plus, it's like you can fuck it. About one or six in the morning. I like it. Gotcha. I like that. Some of your shit. He don't shit anything bad. That sounds becoming like. This guy's out. Go. That's all I was trying to say is, sir, judge me. I think. With the fully back. It's kind of you. That's what I'm saying. Your boss. I I look forward to it. Yeah. Here's stuff. All all twelve characters. I can shoot the bases at it. I really wanna. Then when I said something back, you know, I said, well, hey, we're really, you know, we really missed the fight. Maybe really liked you in touch to bring a lot. That's long and short. I said, if you wanted part. Something out. So. Thank you so much. I will call you after I did that. Then she goes like, yeah, huh? You know, my department says me, I don't know how many times figure it out, you know, do this. And keep them called and asking me, but if you're pressing already, just bring, you know. Yeah, definitely. You're coming to get me. Well, work something out. Yeah. Especially if you say. And, you know, when you say like, oh, that's any. You know, and I call certain, not racist, that doesn't get flat run the TV. You know, or anything like that. Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah. Well, again, yeah, you know, I agree. I couldn't say that enough. If this is something. All you think. That, you know. That's why I said. I I can't rest it on that with everything else everybody says about him. And just give over him because of one day. And I talked with the guy who hired him, he resigned, who had it on his pocket. And he said, he goes, yeah, he resigned, I remember. But when he got on, he was the best boy I ever had. Well, that's that's that judge is. Mayor over there. I'm a businessman. The things, you know, and he flacks or if he was racist, then probably probably not too good at it. So, okay. I'll let you go. Yeah, don't mind me. I'm here to follow this.
Oh.